Good evening. I will call to order the school board business meeting of April 22nd. Sarah, would you please call the roll?
Aldrich.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
McKeon.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Bowerman.
Yes ma'am. Would you all please join me by standing for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got a crowded house tonight. Have a little fun. We're gonna give us some good news items, and the first one on the list, I'm gonna ask Jenny to come forward, and we're gonna talk about above and beyond volunteer recognition. Jenny, take it away.
Hi. So it is National Volunteer Recognition Week, and each building, mostly the elementary schools, are kind of doing their own celebration to recognize the many amazing volunteers we have. We've asked each school to give us a list of the, those they feel have just contributed way above and beyond, and we've asked those volunteers to come here. Couple things, I'm working on quantifying the number of hours. Last count, we were up over 10,000. I was just reading something online that said each volunteer hour is the equivalent of $24.67 worth of wages. So, I'll try to get a better quantifying figure for you at the end of the school year. But, every person here who is a volunteer has done just amazing things, and I have a booklet that if you are at an elementary school, you will get this at the elementary school. If you are not at an elementary school, please see me if I have not given you one already. Because we have 34 people that we've asked to be here, I'm not sure all of them aren't here, I think we decided the fastest way would be to have everybody who is being recognized as a volunteer, please stand up, and we'll just have you give your name and what school you're with, and on the way out, I'll hand you your certificates. So, would you do that now if you're here, if you were invited to be here? So I'm Patty Molden, and I'm volunteering at East Middle School.
I'm Shawa Vikdom. The school district nurses asked me to be there.
I'm Paul Huberson, and I volunteer at Jackson Elementary.
I'm Anne St. Michael's Jeffries, and I volunteer at Suncoast.
I'm Rachel Armstrong, and I've been to all the elementaries and middle schools for Haring Division.
Marvin Field at Ingle Creek Elementary School.
R.D. Subpap Elementary.
Melissa Stevens, Suncoast Elementary.
Drew Campbell, Jackson Elementary, and I'm there because of Anderson Cora.
Melissa Savinsky, I was district wide with the Haring Division screening.
Leanne Kuya, West Middle School.
Let's go help out Red Oaks Elementary.
Did we get everyone? Okay. Thank you all very much.
You are welcome to stay if you want. We also understand if you have other things to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a thrill running in line.
All right, we'll kind of let the roll shift here.
Are you a volunteer?
Yeah.
I apologize for my speech.
you tell us a little bit about your program. Are we, we're gonna do one at a time, right Sarah?
Yes.
All right. Is, hold on a second, is Autumn coming? How'd you get over there? I didn't see you. All right. So, the second good news tonight is for Destination Imagination. We actually have two teams that we're gonna recognize. This first, I love the names by the way. Your name, they're in the room, right? I like your name better. Organized Mess, what a great name. Organized Mess, I got a little thing to read here, then I'm gonna turn it over to Autumn. So Organized Mess placed first in the improvisational challenge, and earned the chance to compete in the global finals in Kansas City, where they will compete with students from around the world. Team members include, bear with me guys if I don't get the names quite right, Michael Waldorf? I'm kind of guessing you're Michael. I think I got that right. C.J. Younger? Okay. Himani Yoshi?
Hi.
C.U. Corr. Esther Kuah?
Yep.
Okay. And Peyton Mason. Excellent. And then the team managers are Chris Younger and Sugati Yoshi. Excellent. So, all right, Autumn, you wanna say something about it, or we wanna put these guys on the spot? You tell us?
No, they, it was really fun to watch. This is my first year being a part of the DI teams, and so I got to go in and watch them compete, and to watch some of their competitions, and it was just really amazing to see the level of creativity that they use. Maybe you guys can just really quickly share what your challenge is, because I think that's, it's really impressive what they have to do on the spot, so.
Something, okay. It's a lot, so just bear with us for a second. Yeah, I'll go as fast as I can, we'll still keep it simple. So it's an improv challenge, so every year it's a couple different elements. It essentially starts out, there's always like a research portion that you're gonna know beforehand. So we get 10 historical figures, and it's called Heads Up this year. So they're all dealing with coins. So, for example, it's like Merlion from Singapore. So that's one of our characters. So we picked 10 of them, and then we each researched two of them and became masters of them, so to say. And then, when we get to the competition day, they draw two of those, and then they draw a situation, which could be anything from like, your team is going shopping for hats, to, I don't know. There's a tsunami, and there's unicorns everywhere. Yeah. Something crazy that you're not gonna expect. So you get those three, and then you get a genre. And so they flip a coin right in front of you, and it's either comedy or tragedy, and so it'll land on one of those. And then you'll start the skit, you get two minutes to prepare with that given information. After two minutes, then you go right into the five-minute presentation time. You start, and then on the back wall somewhere, there's a little slip of paper with the flip on it. And so at any point in time, you can go over there, you take the flip off the wall, one person in the team reads it, and then you, from the second you read that, it switches from verbal to nonverbal, as well as from either comedy to tragedy, or tragedy to comedy. And those flips are not easy. They're again, super random, and you just have to make them work. It could be absolutely anything. Like, the sky is raining glitter. And so they, you just gotta make it work without.
What's the duration of the performance again?
Five minutes.
So, from the, from the time you start, it's five minutes?
Yeah. So it's two minutes to plan, and then as soon as you start, it's five minutes, and then you have to gauge when you want to pick up the flip.
Wow.
This is definitely the most difficult challenge we have ever had.
Well, the amazing thing is they go to nonverbal. So they're acting everything out, nonverbal, once they hit that flip, and they have to try and let you know what the flip is, nonverbally. I mean, it's really, really cool for them to place first out of all the teams in the state, and now be able to go compete internationally, I think is really, is a big deal.
Very well, the competition, the state competition.
The state competition this year was at Chambly. But, I think it's, you know, especially if we're trying to lay out this challenge and explain it, it's so tough for us, but every year, we've kind of grown on the different skills to get us a spark, because this is a really hefty one, so. We've become a really strong team, and that's really the only reason we could even make it to spars. We know each other's strengths and weaknesses so well now, that we can play off each other as a team.
And when is Nationals?
This is May 28th. 22nd to 26th.
Understand it. Well, congratulations guys, not only on representing yourself well, but our district, and good luck at Nationals. Brain hole.
We'll see you again.
Congratulations.
Do you have a certificate?
Yeah, that would be good.
Reggie?
Yeah, talk.
Do you know of anyone they can talk to about things to do in Kansas City?
Hold on guys, I got you pegged. Did you have barbecue later or?
Don't photobomb Judy. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Great job guys. Have barbecue later or?
That's what I actually do it on.
Call me in back, call me in back.
Go photobomb Judy. One, two, three. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
Great job guys.
Yeah. So while group number two is coming in, they performed the same thing. They were in the, they actually competed against this group. And so, it was awesome that they got to make it to state too. This is a senior high, they're both senior high teams, but this one only has one high schooler on it, and the Rockston Middle School. So, they also did extremely well to be able to compete at this level.
Future looking bright.
It sure is. Hi guys, so I'm gonna read just what I have, a little bit of information, and then perhaps if there's anything else to say, but we'll ask you questions. So this is Flip the Switch, again, a great name. You guys placed fifth in the improvisational challenge, and bear with me guys if I don't get your names quite right, but I wanna read your names, so the record has it. Paige Leary? Hi Paige. Janani Karfick?
Janani.
Janani, thank you. Agrim Yoshi?
Yep.
Are you connected to the Yoshi?
Yes.
All right. So it runs in the family.
Sibling.
Exactly. Carter Smith? Okay. Libby Hendrickson? You know, it's nice to have Hendrickson we're giving an award to that's not the guy in the back of the room. We've recognized him a few times. Good job, Libby. And Smitr Arun Kumar?
Oh, Smirty.
Smirty. Okay. You know what, your name used to say it exactly how you wanted, and the team manager's Lisa Leary. So, what did you guys like about this competition?
Well, it's just an opportunity for us to kind of spontaneously, based on our challenge, which is the improvisational challenge, it's a way to spontaneously be creative and use our minds in a way that's really not an opportunity that's offered in any other place.
Right. And how long have you guys been doing this?
A various number of years. I've done it four years.
This is also my fourth year.
And then for myself, I'm lucky, this is our fifth year.
So, would I be safe in saying you're gonna continue doing this?
Yes.
Excellent. Excellent. All right, well congratulations on your fifth place finish, which is outstanding, and that's phenomenal. So you also represented, not only yourself well, but Shaka well, and we appreciate that, and we wanna give you a hand. All right guys, we're gonna take a picture. Why don't you come on in here in the center? Hi.
I think the mic's.
Well done, nice job.
Thank you.
I'm gonna slide behind you. Someone will follow.
I will look back because it should be all on you, so why don't you guys step up just a little bit, you guys should be.
We have certificates for all you guys, but rather than do it, I'm gonna just hand them to your manager and let him be rushed out.
More of him to cover up the better.
Hold on, we got parent photos. Adam? Congratulations, take this one again. All right. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you. We're gonna have basketball come through, so.
CJ, you can stay.
It is, right? Stay. Good thing.
See you.
You wanna keep holding it Bob, because now we have basketball coming through. That would be great. And there's plenty of girls.
I can handle that.
Perfect. Here you go coach.
Where you wanna go?
I'm good, I'm good.
Military precision. All right, for the TV ladies, welcome tonight. This is gonna be recognizing our girls' basketball team, and we wanna offer our congratulations to them for competing in the 4A Girls State Basketball Tournament this past March. They qualified for the tournament by beating Eden Prairie 41-39 on Friday night at that time in Eden Prairie, and then they played the number two seeded Stillwater Ponies in the state quarterfinals. So I wanna congratulate all of you, and I'm gonna make the same statement I made before with these other groups, if I mess up your name, I apologize, but I want, I want your name out there, so I'm gonna try to say the name of everybody on the team. So here we go. Isabel West. Here we go. Kylie Stark. Okay, you can rub your nose when she does that, because then I don't know which one I did. Jaylee Copeland. Kelly Brennan. Jasmine McClella. Amanda Mole.
All right, I love her.
Sophie Moran. Katie Cordis, or Kate Cordis. Jasmine Hale. Maya Mitchell. Delaney Josher? Josher, okay. I don't know if you said the J or not. Natalie Holte. Ally Meyer. Paige Bros. Katie Goodwin. Nicole Geis?
Easy.
Easy. And the team managers, Jocelyn Schromach. And Jocelyn. And Kelsey Creed. She's in. So, outstanding, well, and coaches, Juan, Dan, and Steve, so we got a couple of them here, but outstanding. Let me give you a hand, and ask the coach to kind of talk about the season, so congratulations. Thank you, Michael.
Again, I wanna thank you guys for inviting us. These ladies deserve it, they had a great season. Again, our emphasis all year was team basketball, and these guys did it to a T all year long. Again, in the section upset the number two seed, Casca, and the number one, Eden Prairie, their home court, so it's very impressive. And again, these guys balled in from November 11th to the end of the season. State tournament, they go quite as well, but we had a good time, we had a great experience, but we only have three seniors and freshmen and sophomores, so we expect to be back pretty quickly. So, again, thanks for having us, appreciate it, and these guys deserve another hand.
So I've got certificates for all you guys, I'm gonna give you your coat, rather than trying to figure out who to. We are gonna try to take a photo, so I think bunch up a little bit here.
We'll actually just do it separately, since there are so many.
All right.
So after you do the certificate, I'll take a review outside.
Nice job.
I'll follow on this one. I think we go, congratulations.
Thank you.
Have to get your certificates.
You have to get some certificates.
Nice job. A little point certificate. All right. See you guys. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
No. They were gonna take them off.
Right?
Do you go by Michael or Mike?
Whatever you wanna call me.
All right, I'll call you Michael, that's what's listed here, but you're clearly sitting with all your friends now, Michael. Come on up. So we have our next item of good news, and the gentleman walking up to join us is Michael Hoffman, he's a high school biology teacher, and I wanna read what I have here that recognizes you for great work. Congratulations, Michael Hoffman, our biology teacher in high school who was recognized in March by WCCO, Channel 4, as an excellent educator. This is Michael's 10th year teaching at the school. It says, "Michael, you went in to teach because you liked to work with students, you keep your lessons exciting, but it's the relationships that the students have that excite you the most. And at the end of the school year, your goal is for students, for his students, is for them to hit the ball." That's what this does. So, tell us a little bit about kind of how this came to be, and how'd you get recognized, and what does this mean?
Oh, it was a morning, it was a Monday morning at 9:00 in the morning, and I was trying to get my second semester, second semester of all students ready for already, we've been doing block schedule for the last four years with AP Bio in the second semester, and I was getting excited for a 90-minute exploration in the world of biology. Turned around after the five-minute pep talk, and there was lights and cameras, and everything right there caught me completely.
You had no clue?
So I had no clue it was coming, and it was definitely a nice little surprise, and got my heart racing, that's for sure.
That's great. Well, we appreciate as a school board, what you do every day for our district, for high school, and more importantly, for the kid, that's clearly why you're doing it, but it's nice to see you get recognized for that, because you know, what teachers do just flies under the radar so many times, so it's really good that you got recognized for the excellence that you bring to the job. So we thank you, and you too.
Joining us is AP Bio.
13, 8:00 in the morning. It's always a Monday morning. It's always a Monday morning, and we need more blisters, no more calling to school.
I would like to share what Taylor said, when you gave your tape.
My oldest daughter, Taylor, graduated in 2015, and we were chatting about what the meeting was, what recognitions we're having tonight, and she's, and then we got to your recognition, she's, "Oh, hello Mr. Hoffman." She graduated 2013, so.
Thanks again.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. All right. Well, if that was all the fun stuff, now we got, I can't.
Down to work.
So, we'll move ahead, excuse me, to item number four. Consideration Agenda as presented, any additions? Do we have any additions? All right, I'm looking for a motion to accept the agenda as presented. I heard Paul, second by Judy. Any discussion? All those in favor, say the time of saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, we'll move on to consent. Looking for a motion to accept consent as presented. And the man second. Any comments or questions, or any?
Yeah. We have somebody leaving us who has gotten a lot of publicity, and made a lot of, a lot of impact on a lot of students, and well, we wish everybody well that's leaving our district. I just wanted to call out that Kelly Holstein has done a lot of great work with a lot of students, received a prestigious award, and done some great things, and I certainly wish her well, and thank her for her service. And the most I ever interacted with Kelly directly was hiring our superintendent here, and she, she helped steer us in the right way, at least we think so. But, no, I just always appreciated her, her good works.
Any other comments on consent? All right, fair and done, all those in favor, say the time of saying, oh, yeah, I did, I got the motion.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say the time of saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, we are on to, where are we at here? Item six. Jeff, I think you're gonna come up, we're gonna do the ICS audit.
You got this, thank you. All right. Just a, I guess a recap of an audit. We performed with our, the district auditors, Bergen, KBB. So back in January, we just wanna take a good hard look at all of the different contracts that we had in place with, with ICS. So the audit focused on consulting activity from 2014 through 2018, and as I said, emphasizing and announces, so agreements, subsequent district payments related to those agreements. So, we did a lot of the work in-house here, the auditors helped us a little bit, but in summary, we determined payments to ICS were reconciled back to all of the contractual agreements. Costs related to former employee were not passed back to the district, so again, we paid the amounts we were supposed to pay based on the contracts that were in place. And then we looked at reimbursable charges, so sometimes can be above and beyond the agreed to contracts, so things like mileage, photocopying, all of those appeared reasonable. And then we also looked at, okay, the amount we agreed to pay, those amounts built into those contracts, again, were reasonable to other districts paying contractors for similar services. So, we're pleased. Nothing out of the ordinary at all.
Questions for Jeff?
I would simply say I not only appreciate the fact that the audit came back clean, but it also validates ICS has been a very good partner of ours, and it's comforting, reassuring, whatever adjective you want to use, but it turned out this way, which is what we expected, but it's good that it did, so I appreciate you leading that effort.
Okay. All right. We're gonna actually take action on this. It's just kind of a report. Jeff, I'm gonna suggest, take a little parrot here, and just jump to 7.1, just 'cause you're already at work.
Oh, okay.
The financial update.
Sure. Sarah will have that for me. All right. So this is our standard monthly report, looking at expenditures and revenues within the district's general fund. So, I think the important thing is there, we, we look at, we go back to two years, so we're always comparing our data against the same timeframe in fiscal year 18, and fiscal year 17. See the state revenue, it's tracking where it should be, based on our metered payments. A little bit ahead on federal revenue, because we've done, I think I was, two months ago, am I saying, hey, we're a little bit behind on our, on our federal draws. Obviously, now we're a little bit ahead when you compare to the two preceding years. And property taxes, I've talked about that every time, we recognize that 100%, as we're supposed to, and local fees, interest, et cetera. So we've made a change, maybe I'll talk about that when I get down to the projections. So, on the, on the object series, so that's the expenditures that are involved with this one, and as I say, it's all about salaries and benefits, and that's when we are looking at these comparisons, or tracking current year, we're really focusing on those two areas, so basically 80% of total expenses of the general fund. So, you know what I really like about this trend is that, when you think about last year, when we finalized the audit, we had spent a little bit less than what was projected in the budget for salaries and benefits, and we're even ahead of that when you look at the total percent at the end of March, we're at 63.77. And a year ago, when we came up quite well, at 64.58. The one change here, and I put the, up there in the local fees and interest, I put that in bold, 1.9 million. What we've taken out of there is the land sale for the Jackson Outlet A. We've simply delayed the closing for that property. It will go into our restricted fund balance. So we, we're just taking that revenue out in the current year, and it'll show up in FY '20, in going into the restricted fund balance. So, still, I think, you know, the big thing we're interested in is that operating surplus, that 638,000, which for the most part, does go into the unappropriated, and that's where we wanna be building back fund balance. So, that's still in place, and I guess as I mentioned, we're tracking already a lot to hit that, to hit that number. So, projected June 30 fund balance, and the non-spendables stays the same, we'll just reduce that restricted fund balance. Now, we're taking that 1.1 million dollars down to 435. Signed fund balance stays the same, and there's our fund balance increase then in the, in the. And there's our fund balance increase then in the unassigned fund balance. So again, all we're doing is pushing the recognition of the revenue for that sale into the following fund this one year. Questions?
Questions for Jeff? I always appreciate these monthly updates. It's just kind of good to see the ships still.
Yep.
Have the right direction.
Looking good.
On rough water, so thank you. Now, in this case, we actually, sorry, Paul.
So I can handle an even keel.
Exactly. Exactly. Now, in this case, we're actually taking action because we're approving a change, if you will, to the revenue expected total revenue. So I will look for a motion to approve the revised budget, particularly the general fund revenue as presented. And second. Kristi, any further discussion on this item?
Just a quick question. So the adjustment is just for the land sale?
Yep. Okay. Yep.
All right. All those in favor, say the time by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, we'll go back to item 6.2. This is an update on our pending creation of the Community Facilities Task Force, I think. Mike, are you going to open it? Yeah, Mike's going to open it.
Yeah, Sarah will help me out. She knows a lot of the details too. But the signup for the Facility Task Force continues through this Wednesday, April 24th at 3:00 p.m. The focus of the task force is to take a look at the capacity of existing spaces within our district and the use of those spaces. And I believe, as of this afternoon, we had 17.
Seventeen.
And 17 candidates for the committee signup. The facilities committee will meet Wednesday and they will look at all those applicants. They will be, there'll be blind applications, if you will, where the names and such identifying information will be removed from the applications. And they will be coming up with recommendations to the school board for members of that Facilities Task Force, which in the first meeting, the kickoff meeting for that group again is May 15th at 6:00 p.m. Any other important pertinent details I left out?
I think you've got it. Yeah, I was excited to see 17. It's great.
And the application is still up on the school district website? Or somebody could come into the office and get a paper and pencil version?
I was also glad to see the variety of people who have applied. We said that was one major focus we wanted, that we have variety of people have that in the pool.
And I think you've all had a chance to look. We have a folder that everyone has access to of redacted versions. So no names, no personal information, but the application as a whole is there. And so all 17 are there now this afternoon.
Thank you for your work organizing that. It's much appreciated.
Any other discussion on this topic?
So the selection is Wednesday during the Facilities Committee meeting. Will the individuals be contacted right after that, like the next day after that meeting? Or do they have to come back to the board for formal approval?
I believe our process was to make a recommendation at the May 6th onboard work session.
Yep.
If I'm not mistaken, I'm sorry to interrupt what you were saying, but I'm thinking back to the finest one. And I thought we actually, when that group made a recommendation, we reached out and contacted those individuals to confirm that they were willing.
That's a great.
And that way, when we come to the board meeting, you bring six or whatever the number is forward, we know they're willing to. So that might be a good thing.
That's a great memory.
Absolutely.
That's a great memory. And there's also a note there that all applicants will be contacted. So no one will be wondering what's going on.
So to manage expectations, we would be doing that. We wouldn't be approving this until, is that May 6th?
May 6th.
So for the benefit of everybody watching and wondering, well, hey, if it's closed on the 24th and Facilities is meeting shortly thereafter, it's not like your phone's going to ring that night. It's going to take a little bit for us to confirm. And we probably won't butt contact the people we're selecting initially.
We've asked all of the applicants, and it's included on the application, save the date of May 15.
Right.
Because obviously, the 6th is then closer to the 15.
Right.
Asking them to please save the date. So they are aware of that.
Very good.
Sarah, just to manage beginning expectations, there are 17 applicants, but they're not all for the same role currently.
Right.
So there were, I can't remember how many community members.
You know, I don't know that off the top of my head. We were able to do a download without the names again, but I don't know that number as far as what we have currently.
Yeah, it needs to match categories that was laid out, so.
I don't.
I don't remember. That says.
Oh, sorry, you were asking.
I think he's asking the number of applicants.
Sorry.
Community parents is six. So we could have applications in all these categories. So we're not necessarily going against 17.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
All right. Let's see.
We have a question.
No, are we going to have a list of backups just in case somebody backs out then?
Excellent point, Paul. And that is exactly what we did before. We identified a couple of alternates.
Okay.
That if you had, let's say, you get to the six and you called them and they said, you know what, I can't now, I've got business conflict. Then we have something to fall back on, which is why we don't want to notify beyond the six until we know that the six are in. So.
Great point.
So that we would expect the committee to identify a couple.
Great.
All right, thank you for that update. So if you're interested, get your application. It's only a couple of days. All right, we'll move on to item 8.1. And this is the second reading and then approval of several school district policies. 533, 614, a form that goes with it, 722, and a form that goes with it. And then a deletion of policy. And our policy chair, Kristi, is going to walk us through that.
So hopefully, everyone had a chance from our last meeting to go through and look at all of these different policies. I don't know if I necessarily have to go through every single one and talk about what each one is. But one of the things that I do want to point out is that the deletion of 909 is being replaced by policy 722. And Form 722, which is a public data request form and policy for the district. So it's not just an elimination of policy. It basically is a replacement. It's really more of a in-depth public data request policy versus just a news media policy. Mike, you want to add anything to?
No, I think you captured that. 722 is a very comprehensive policy, multiple pages outlining, you know, how data requests work. Where 909 was really a couple paragraphs in terms of professional expectations in working with the media, which, yes, it does replace it, but also we have professional expectations in working with any constituent or any community member or anybody. So in some ways, you know, I don't see that as necessary either. But 722 is much more comprehensive in nature.
The 533 is the wellness one. We talked about that somewhat in length at the last meeting. That is a mandatory policy that, correct me if I'm wrong, we did not have that policy. Correct?
Not clear.
Is that not the complete? That's a complete one, right?
Right, right. Not a complete one, but we did have, we did have 533.
And this is one that very well, I think, I told Paul just before the meeting, I wouldn't be surprised if we're back next fall with a new revised policy, 533. There's a lot going on in terms of wellness and, you know, school meal rules and laws and court cases. We all agree that we want great things for kids. We want healthy meals for kids. And we seem to have a lot of difficulty getting it into statute, getting into rulemaking where it makes good sense that people can agree upon, so. So that's our best stab at it with the information we have.
Right. Does anyone have any questions, Bobby?
I have two, but that may be just because I missed the last meeting, perhaps from discussing this. I think they're pretty simple. I don't know if they can be answered, so if they can't, that's okay. I'm looking at the Form for 614, so this is the district testing one. And somebody has to sign it. And I'm wondering who we're going to designate because there's a lot of, I, 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 I understand, I understand, I will do, blah, blah, blah. And it even goes on. It's kind of humorous because it says you're naming yourself, you're authorized, and your license can be suspended if this is in error. So who is signing on behalf of the district for this?
We'll talk to the former testing director.
I noticed it was that position.
Go to the top of this one, Sarah. This is, yeah, right? Everybody who administers tests, touches tests, has anything to do with them, signs one of these.
Oh.
There's training that goes with it too. Yeah, so everybody does. You're basically saying, I'm not going to share what I see. If I happen to see something, I'm not going to help. I'm not going to knowingly violate any of the rules. I'm going to do this with integrity is basically it.
That makes more sense. Okay. And then, if I may, ask another question?
Yep.
It's kind of a similar question, and it may be the person in the room, meaning Ashley, but who is the person we're designating to be the recipient, responsible authority or whatever it is for the public data request?
Believe we determined the superintendent or superintendent designee?
Yes.
So.
We actually have forms that I put that information in accordingly that we've been replaced with this other form.
That's not what I'm asking. In the policy itself, there's a section called responsible authority. Responsible authority means the individual designated by the school board as the individual responsible for collection, use, blah, blah, blah. Historically, your position, Ashley, and you in particular, have done all this, but I thought there was some discussion of, is it really rooted in the superintendent and then you delegate? So I'm asking, who is that person? Do we know?
It'll be the superintendent. Ashley and I had that discussion. And that, because it doesn't, usually they go to Ashley. Sometimes they go direct, you know, straight to HR and other places and so.
But it has its worth saying with Buck's thoughts here. Administratively, it may be administered.
Yep.
For Ashley.
Absolutely.
And that's fine. That's a good question.
So I would be the responsible authority and Mike, you would be the compliance official. That's what we agreed to, what we talked about.
I guess that's a little different than what you said.
I think other way around. Although, we have one where that's written in.
So we don't have to delay this, but I would like to get clarity on.
I'm the responsible authority and Ashley, I believe, is the data practice compliance official, I believe.
I'll find the form and I'll resend it to you and then we can get it to Sarah so that we can.
We've got it. Yep. We actually had a long conversation on that.
Very good. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Anything else?
The right.
All right. So I think, Sarah, you tell me if we can do this in mass or if we can act on it individually.
I think in mass is just fine.
That's what I thought. All right. So I am looking for a recommendation to approve school district policies, 533, 614, the Form for 614, 722, and the Form for 722, along with the deletion and replacement of 909 as been presented. Paul, one second.
Second.
Kristi, is there any further discussion on the policies? I would simply say thank you to the policy committee for doing the work and the heavy lifting on this to bring it to us. So thank you for that. Hearing none. All those in favor, say the time by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. And that brings us pretty close to the end of our meeting. Let's do a round robin. And we can again include our committee members on this, the different items, but we'll go this way.
All right. Facilities committee meeting coming up on Wednesday, as we discussed, and some really important work to do.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Joe?
We had the finance committee meeting prior to school board meeting. Everything looks good. Jeff does, doing a great job. And I just want to say that Saturday night's prom, and for everybody who's going to prom, I hope they have a safe and enjoyable memory, especially for the seniors. It's my senior.
Here you are.
I think they do a really good job making sure the kids are safe and have a good time.
And they're going to the Mall of America and they're doing rides from 10:30 to midnight or something like that. Nothing I did at my prom.
They get wild ones.
Are they eating before or after?
During and after.
Probably high schoolers are eating before, during, and after.
Exactly.
They do.
All right, Kristi?
We have our first communications committee meeting on Wednesday at 4:00. So that'll kind of be our brainstorming, thought to process, kind of a organization hour before Facilities meeting. So I'm looking forward to that.
All right. And thank you to the new committee who's been constituted for that. Dave?
A couple of things. One is tomorrow morning at 7:00. And I think we've talked about this before, they're releasing the 2018 graduation rates. And just a reminder, they're always releasing them far after it actually happens. So this is for last year's cohort. Usually it would have been in February. But because they did some changes in how they are calculating that, which really don't impact the numbers all that much, it took them two additional months. Normally, they'll come out in February. And where we were a little disappointed in last year's results, this year's results were pretty good. It moved in the right direction. So I'm going to tell you these numbers, but they are embargoed until 7:00 tomorrow morning. So, yeah.
On the camera.
Is this live right now?
It's being recorded on the iPad.
And I'm sure people are going to hit this.
Until Wednesday.
It's going to be out there. It's going to go viral. I'm sure we'll risk that, but I'll just give you the numbers. All right.
It's a good one.
High School 866 last year, 90.2 this year. So a good jump. And as a district with Takata rolled in, we went from 79.7 to 83.4. For some perspective, the state is at 83.2 this year. They were up half a point. And so we were nearly, well, we were three points behind the state last year, and now we're just slightly above as a whole district. And then we were called out and had to do an improvement plan at both Takata and the high school around graduation rates for two, actually three specific student groups. Our EL group, our special ed group, and our three-year reduced price lunch, and you were up 16 points, 11 points, and five points respectively. So good progress kind of across the board in all those. And Ashley, we worked, and I and Ford worked on a press release today, so it'll kind of just capture these numbers. So that was good. And then secondly, I can't, I read the Redmond's rap really carefully. And I'm sorry if this is a duplicate that was in there, but did you mention GARE in there? I can't remember.
A while back I did, but no, not the most recent meeting. Worked with the city and equity, no.
So we did, GARE stands for Government Alliance on Rights and Equity. And we were at a meeting and saw Shakopee's name pop up as a list, on this list of cities that were working with this group, not knowing that the city of Shakopee was working with this group. And so we connected with them and actually brought a small group to meet with the city. I think the county's going to join us. The police department was there. Someone from Parks and Rec was there as well. I think they're asking Angelica to join us, right? Did they talk to her?
I just mentioned it, yes.
Okay, I didn't spoil it. Okay. And so we're looking to work together to do some of this work. And so I'm kind of excited about that. That's it.
Great. Paul?
Angelica, could you shed some more light on this for us?
Yeah, well, it was very quick this morning because Nate, was it feeling well? He was under the weather today, so we went pretty quick. And it's just, it's more of a policy, you know, as a government policy. It's not working like individual, you know, each person. But it's just trying to see, trying to, because like he said, I'm trying to use the word without offending anybody, but the group right now is, you know, white American, right? So trying to, trying to just understand behind different cultures, like what's going on? Why is this happening? And they said they were trying to do like a simulation or something and they're like, well, we don't get it. And they're like, we don't get it. We don't understand like why the barriers might be or what is happening. happening." So, that's why they offered, you know, they asked if I would join, just to see like, why? Why does this group do this, or why does this other group do that? What are the reasons, or? And it's hard until you walk in their shoes, unless you lived it, unless you see it, and because I do come from a family where my parents weren't rich, I did live in a very poverty area in Houston, I have the story, I can tell it, and that's the idea, just, you know, just why did that happen? You know, why are they this way, or why, how, why are they, they're just trying to survive, that they just have to pull whatever they can, how they can. So, the idea is just trying to view different, you know, just trying to, they're just trying to figure out why things are happening, and they're just trying to understand it through their eyes, through their understanding, I guess, that's how I can explain it. It's hard, I mean, and I'm just gonna go in there to just give a reason why?
And help us.
And help, yeah, just my view, that's for that.
Great. Well, I was coming to you next anyway, so, I mean, you helped us understand that better, but is there anything else you'd care to add?
Um, nothing.
Perfect.
Thank you.
That's fine. Jeff? Good. Keith?
Good.
Good.
I just, I think Judy and Richard are both on the steering committee for our academies, and I feel like we're making a lot of, laying a lot of groundwork to set up an annual retreat and then probably start meeting quarterly next year, and I think it's going really well. Amazing input from our community.
And something was mentioned at that meeting about the amount of money Academy Champions had spent on their commitment, it was amazing. I don't wanna say it off the top of my head, but what you said, it was like, whoa!
Six hundred, was it?
It was over 400.
Six hundred and forty, was it? I should know this, right? But I have it or not. Yeah.
Substantial.
Impressive, yes.
That's great. Bob?
I've got a compliance right now we're working with, and you'll get this probably at a May meeting, Barracuda Aquatics, probably you'll get that annual agreement, so we're presenting that probably next month, we're starting to negotiate that with them right now. Also, probably in one of your June meetings, we'll get a school district population estimate resolution before you, working with the city planner quite a lot right now, getting that estimate, and a community education funding, a lot of that comes from based on your school district population, so... Got a big meeting Wednesday night, we're doing our 2019-20 planning meeting for driver's education for next school year, so putting together all our classroom sessions, and this year, we're offering 19 of them, so, and we've got about 370 of our students that are currently enrolled, and we're anticipating about 480 to 490 by the time that is summer that will be actually going through the program, and that's classroom and behind the wheel. And then, lastly, we have a point of impact class meeting, we have like five or six of those, that study nine at the high school, we're averaging about 60 to 70 parents and students that come to that. And what that meeting does is actually, the student between ages of 15 and 18 have to drive with mom or dad, or some of the licensed drivers that stay in Minnesota 50 hours before they actually get their permit, but the tenementist that goes from 50 hours to 40. So, we bring in state patrol officer and other experts to talk to the families, so and it's free, so...
Thank you. I wanna actually thank you too, Bob. I too, Dave, read Redmond's rap religiously, as I'm sure everyone does. But I always appreciate the community, I always seem to put in a nice block in there, and the sheer volume of things that are going on in this district and the use of our facilities, I mean, it's phenomenal, and I realize you're just kind of highlighting things, but that's really to the credit of this district and our facilities and our programming. So, congratulations, thank you, but also just for the updates, it's always nice to read. Sarah?
Okay, thanks.
Ash?
Yes, this Wednesday, we're hosting a special tour at the high school for seniors in our community, and we're putting this on in conjunction with the community center. At last check, 17 people had registered, so it'll be a nice group, that said, check-in starts at 8:30, the tour starts at 9 o'clock, so if any of you are available, stop by, we'd love to see you. This group always has great questions, and the last time we met with them was before the academies were implemented at Oxford. And also, be sure to check your mailboxes this weekend, the communications department just finalized our spring newsletter, so that will pick your mailboxes Thursday through Saturday at some point this weekend.
Just a bit of other good news, I got a lot of great text messages and phone calls and neighbors stopping by to congratulate us on hiring a great new hockey coach, a local alum, I think, I don't know, Judy, did you teach him when he was a student?
Yeah.
But Calvin Simon is our new coach, and a lot of people are very excited about that. I know a lot of community members have given me some strong endorsements, so I wanna congratulate Matt Hanson and Keith, your department, for helping that hiring process. Excited for the new start.
I was gonna say, good kid, but it's both sides, I shouldn't say kid, not a decent word.
He appreciates everything. Paul?
Well, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the Shakopee Hockey Association. Other than that, they really don't have anything other to say here with everybody.
I have two things to tell you about Southwest Metro.
Okay.
First, their finance director's leaving, and so they hired a new finance director. His name is Brian Fowler. He comes from Mankato, he's currently the athletic director right at the job, and he was, what was my turn to say? He comes well by John McBrue and Scott here.
Reckon it.
Yes, yes. And then, the other thing is, we approved something unique that we have been approved before, at least on my time being on board. We currently have 11-member district, and we approved a two-year associate member for four districts that want to be part of the intermediate district. And what this two-year does is, they don't get any voting rights, no board members will be sitting at the table from those four districts, but they're welcome to attend because we're open. And the superintendent, I believe, will attend one or two meetings per year, so this is just the thing that they're doing, and they felt like it was a really good fit, but they wanted to see how it would actually work.
So, they're just gonna observe? They're not gonna be a member of the district?
They're associate members.
So, I guess, do they get any benefits from this?
Yes, they're getting services, which shouldn't impact our services, so Southwest Metro will take over their programming, but they just won't have any voting rights at this time.
But then, they're contributing expense-wise as well?
Correct, absolutely.
And then, is the thought that in a couple of years, or a year after probation or whatever this is called, they would move to full status, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Potentially.
Is it four districts?
Did I get it right?
You did, it's four.
How many are there now that are full?
There's 11 of us.
So, this is a sizable chunk of that.
Which is part of why we wanted to test the laws.
You asked which ones?
Yeah. And can I be named or not?
Monseca, Janesville, Waldorf, Pemberton, Nerhe, which is what, New Richland, Arnhem, Geneva, Ellen Dell Geneva. Ellen Dell Geneva.
All these names, you know.
Sir, Carlyle. And who's supported what?
Janesville, Waldorf, you guys said that, or Waterville?
Waterville.
Morris Town.
They already have a building...
Yeah, J O E and Nerhe.
They already have a building and a program set up, these four districts, we're just gonna take it over. So, it should have no impact on our students or the 11-member district.
But they will pay part of the fees for the director, the financial services, but it's, you know, so there is some saving, there will be a little bit of cost savings to the other 11 members.
I'll leave you for last, I don't have any to do, just thank you for dealing with my absence at the last meeting.
Yeah, I'm gonna see my time today.
Okay. I went to an EXU meeting last Friday, or last Thursday, and found out that Scott Swanson was our representative, representative assembly liaison to the Metro EXU. I don't even know what his full responsibilities were for that, maybe intended to be periodically, but the EXU is an educational service, educational cooperative service.
I thought they were dissolving those, obviously not.
They did not dissolve, and actually, if you jump to page 12, they do go down a couple more, up, up, sorry, the one with bubble bubbles.
Okay.
I don't know if you can zoom in at all.
Sure.
They provide quite a few services that we take some advantage of. They have collaborative groups, training, they provide some expertise, knowledge pool, all kinds of collaborative groups to help districts connect with each other. I think sometimes I went, it's just kind of, I was a guest. They had voting, they voted on a couple of things, I didn't get to vote, I didn't know what I would've been voting for, but they actually do quite a few things for us, and Scott was our rep, I don't know.
All right. So, I'm just checking, I thought we made an assignment for that.
I will check on that.
We heard that, we can let them know.
Yeah. I was thinking that was, it just rings the bell, like, that was one of the ones when I did all the assignments, that was on the list. ECSU. I thought it was, but it may have just...
You're thinking of ECSU, it's on the list.
No, I know that is, but, and if it's not on the list, then we've made a conscious decision a few times to just kind of pare it back, it got so lengthy, so, are you suggesting if it's not?
Mike, how about this, I'll get smarter about what that actually means for us here, and I will come back and let you guys know. They're functioning without us right now, I think they'll carry that.
I don't know if they're gonna be able to make it.
No, it's not, so, that's one of the ones that, because we kind of pared it back a few years ago. But if we find that it's a hole and we need to fill it?
Yeah, I'll find out what it actually means and what we're missing by not having
And then, Kristi, we've done some work, we talked about for this, the School Board Communications Committee, I've got one item to hopefully add to the agenda on Wednesday. We spoke at the most recent work session of the School Board about, we were doing some legwork on a survey, and we did more legwork, and we have a draft proposal that we had the cabinet vet today, that we'd like to bring to that School Board Communications Committee for further kind of revision, and then hopefully bring it then to the full board in May for approval, either May 6th or May 20th, so... I wanna reach out and get feedback, you know, if we move forward from the community in terms of how we're doing, and where we can take a look at to improve and do better, so... You can go by the old adage, if you ask the question and you get an answer, then you have to be prepared to act, so, we're looking at it through that lens.
Nope. All right, we'll move on to recommendation of any visitors to the board who would care to speak, and I'm not seeing any, so if you get some, you know. Upcoming meetings, we just talked about a few of them, we've got Communications coming up along with Facilities on Wednesday, Personals on May 6th, along with our next meeting, Board Session, May 6th, and I'll just stop there, so we have a few meetings coming up. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Second. Second, Joe, all those with favor, say with a vote of a say aye.
Aye.
Goes opposed, the motion passes.